This meeting is being streamed live to the Carroll Media Center's YouTube channel, as well as the town's Facebook. Good evening and welcome to the Town of Sykesville Mayor and Town Council Meeting. Today is Monday, July 14th, 2025. The meeting is called to order at 7:00. We begin this meeting, as we begin all meetings, with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a brief moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In that moment of silence, please. Thank you, everyone. All right. I will begin with asking staff if we have anyone signed up for public comment.
Just one, Mayor, Joanna Schofield.
All right, thank you. And I will remind Ms. Joanna that your public comments are limited to three minutes in duration. If you need more time, just let us know, and we'll have to do that by moving to do so. Please say your full name and address for the record.
Thank you. Joanna Schofield, 401 Oklahoma Avenue in Sykesville. So, just wanted to come and share some thoughts with you all, since this is the fun of having you sit here, get to listen to all of us. First of all, I just wanted to thank you for a couple of things. I wanted to thank you for your continual work on trying to get more trails and accessibility for walking. I know it's a lot of complexity, and that's just something that is important to me, and I hear it from other people, and knowing that you all are working on that, I love that, and so thank you for doing that. I also wanted to thank you for, on Oklahoma Avenue, having no parking signs up. It's a huge safety improvement. I used to be terrified of kids getting hit there because it was blind on a hill with no place to walk, and the sun would get in your eyes both ways. And so, I'd go back and forth all the time, and I was always like, "Oh, I should do something." And I never came and asked, and you guys took care of it anyway, so thank you so much for making that safer. And I also wanted to thank you for really making a stamp of more inclusivity for Sykesville and the efforts that you're doing for that. Which takes me to a couple different questions. The first is that with the proclamation for the months where you're recognizing different groups, the question I had is, why do you just do that yearly and have a discussion about it every year? Can you, like, you set it up for, like, for the next three years or something like that, so it doesn't need to be re-brought up every time? Make some type of longer-term commitment? I also wanted to know if, as you recognize, different groups that have not always had as much freedom or rights, if you would consider Disability Month? That's another group that has had a lot of issues and is still having a lot of issues in today's world with, you know, different protections being taken away and such. And that would mean a lot for me as a caregiver to a disabled person. There is July and March are two different months that that can't be recognized. And I know, probably out of time this year, but for next year, as you're considering that. And then, the final question I had is on the bathrooms in downtown Sykesville. During the farmer's market, the women's line is so long, and I once had to wait, like, 15 minutes, and ended up going in the guy's bathroom anyways, because the guys were just going in and out. I was wondering, why does it need to be male and female? Can we just make it bathrooms? And can we also, I mean, that would also be great for inclusivity. It would be great for women as well, to not have to have huge lines. They're identical bathrooms, and we could even go further and have fun with it, and put signs up for, like, the Galagaster, Sykesville monster, and put painting and decorations, and just make it fun, and just have, you know, create, continue creating beauty and fun like you all are doing, so.
Thank you for that, for all of that. And thank you for that last suggestion. It is something we've been discussing, and not publicly, but we've been discussing. Thank you, Ms. Joanna, I appreciate you. Okay. All right, that brings us to our first item of business, which is the consent agenda in this meeting. It's only inclusive of the minutes from our last meeting, which is June 9, 2025. Presuming everyone have reviewed those minutes, is there a motion to approve?
As amended, yes. I make the motion to approve the amended minutes. You didn't see my email, right?
No. Which was, which, okay, what would be the amendment request?
In the header, the word "May" was carried over into June, and that's it.
Okay. I missed that as well. Thank you, Councilman. All right, so the motion on the table is to approve the minutes from June 9, 2025, as amended, or per the amendment request. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. The minutes, therefore, the consent agenda is adopted. And that brings us to our second item, which is the first of new business, and it is to consider, discuss, and act on a proclamation for Parks and Recreation Month. I will go ahead and read that Parks and Recreation Month proclamation now. Whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the town of Sykesville, and whereas Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks, and whereas Parks and Recreation promotes time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being, and alleviating illnesses such as depression, attention disorder, and the symptoms of Alzheimer's, and whereas Parks and Recreation encourages physical activity by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyle, and whereas park and recreation programming and education activities, such as out-of-school time programming, youth sports, and envi- envi- mm-hmm, states bring it back, environmental education are critical to childhood development, and whereas Parks and Recreation increases a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction, and whereas Parks and Recreation is fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, and whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our town and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors, and whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas the town of Sykesville recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and town council of the town of Sykesville that July is recognized as Parks and Recreation Month throughout town. Any comments, requests, or suggestions of any kind, including my copy that has the word "July" misspelled, but our clerk is aware, and it's been, it's been fixed on our written copy that we will sign.
So, just continued recognition of the importance of the open spaces that we have here, and that, you know, as a council, as we continue to work on, you know, accessibility, but also just mindful in any planning, you know, within the Planning Commission, everything else that we continue to retain as much open space, and kind of parks, park-like space, specifically because of that health and wellness.
For sure.
For everyone is so important. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions for staff?
Well, that, you know, thank you for bringing that up, Councilwoman Giraff, because it reminds me of a conversation that we had at MML, where the mayor and I were in a conversation with MML's Parks, their Parks Committee, and one of the topics that was raised was that you can work on either developing ordinances or build within your zoning, and I know we're working on zoning, incentivizing green spaces for various types of developments within a community. And so, maybe in the future, when we move towards the zoning, maybe this is something that we could talk about, because, you know, we heard from a resident, happens to be my wife, if people were wondering. I'll let that controversy sort of stew. But not just, but not just that, but there's been lots of other people that care about connectivity. We've had connectivity studies in our town, and maybe this is something that we want to think about a little bit more, because of all the value of it.
And I actually did, as a result of that, participating in that discussion at, in Ocean City at MML Conference, received from Tawny Town their, their zoning ordinance with respect to open space. And it's a rather new and refined zoning text, so I'll be sharing that with staff this week. Cool, cool. Thank you. Anything else? All right, nothing else being heard. Do we have a motion to adopt the proclamation as read?
I have a motion to adopt the Parks and Recreation Month proclamation.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. So, the first is made by Councilwoman Reese, and seconded by Council President Carter. Carter. Okay. All in favor? Or any need for debate? Okay. All in favor of adopting this proclamation as read? Please say aye.
Aye.
That's everyone. Okay, we are unanimously adopting that proclamation. Next in line in new business is to consider, discuss, act on the proclamation for Maryland 250. And I'll read that now. Whereas the 250th anniversary of the founding of the United States of America will occur on July 4, 2026, and whereas it is in the interest of the town to develop, encourage, and execute an inclusive observance of the 250th anniversary of the founding of the nation that recognizes all Marylanders' struggle for life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness before, during, and after the revolution, and whereas Maryland made significant contributions to the Revolutionary War by supplying materials, resources, ships, and soldiers, and whereas this anniversary invites us to reflect on the ongoing evolution of American democracy, Maryland's integral role in that process, and the impact of Marylanders on the nation's past, present, and future, and whereas stories of revolution exist in all periods of time and in all places and sectors of our state, demonstrating Marylanders' boundless capacity for innovation, growth, and development, and whereas in our formative years, Sykesville engaged with state and national enterprise from supplying metals used in the American Revolution to contributing to the success of the B&amp;O Railroad, America's first commercial railway, and whereas we recognize our town's namesake, James Sykes, for his role as an old defender in the War of 1812, as well as generations of residents whose service continues to preserve our American liberties, and whereas by celebrating our success and reckoning with our setbacks, we will deepen public understanding of our complex history, strengthen public appreciation for service to our country, and inspire public engagement in civic life, and whereas inclusive conversations about our shared past allow us to discuss who we are today and who we want to be in the future, so that we may invigorate and sustain the United States of America for the benefit of future generations. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and town council of the town of Sykesville that residents are encouraged to join the town in celebration of the 250th anniversary of the founding of our nation by joining in events presented by both the nation, the state, and our town. Any comments or questions for staff regarding this proclamation? Cool, cool. Hearing none, is there a motion to adopt this proclamation as written?
So moved.
Thank you. Councilman Keenan? Thank you. We have first and a second, oh, I'm sorry, Council Dyer has a second adapt motion. Any need for debate? I didn't think so. All in favor of adopting this proclamation as written? Please say aye.
Aye.
And that's everyone. Again, this motion, and therefore, this proclamation is unanimously adopted. Thank you. All right, that brings us to our third and final item of new business, which is to consider, discuss, and act on warranty coverage renewal for the license plate recognition units. I'll just do a quick item summary here. We've dropped the pen. We're pausing for Mr. Dyer, and he's got his pen. We can move. Here we go. So, the item summary for this item on the agenda goes as follows. The warranty for the town's two license plate recognition units is set to expire. Staff would like to extend the warranty for the, for an additional three years to include both hardware and software coverage. And a little bit of background is that over, just over a year ago, the town received two license plate recognition, that we call LPR units, through the Carroll County Sheriff's Department. These units were received and installed free of charge by way of a grant. Yay, us, after a year of use, however, the units have become an important tool in helping monitor traffic and public safety activities within the town. Continued operational reliability of these LPR units is essential to supporting proactive policing. So, we'd like to discuss extending now the one-year warranty that's about to expire on both units simultaneously, to three more years at a cost you'll share with us and discuss.
I will.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yep.
So, as the mayor mentioned, this is extending the warranty outside of the one-year warranty that's set to expire for an additional three years. Again, the reason why we want to extend the warranties is because, obviously, these units are, can be very expensive to replace, somewhere between $15,000 and $20,000 each. So, the fact that we've received these from a grant, we want to make sure they stay in as good a working order as possible in the next several years. So, the software package would include 24/7 remote tech support in all software and hardware upgrades that are necessary to keep these units functional. When we prepared the 26 budget, this expense actually wasn't something that we included in the public safety budget, so at a cost of $10,320, that's why we're bringing it before council, so that you all can actually see this, agree that it's a well-needed expense, and then just acknowledge that when we do our budget revision number one later on this year or early next year, that this would be a piece that's included in that budget revision. So, again, it would be an increase in expenses of $10,320 would be added to the public safety category, likely in the...
Revision.
... maintenance line of?
Yes.
And then, there'd be also an increase in revenues for likely income tax revenue. So, again, staff is recommending approval of the proposal before you, and available to answer any questions about the units themselves and their usefulness.
So, I just have two comments. Actually, one question, which I think I know the answer to, but I think for the public certification, it would be helpful, Chief, if you were to give us just one example of when these LPR units were advantageous or beneficial to the discovery process of any kind of crime committed here in town.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Well, I can give you a very recent example.
Okay.
And it couldn't have been a better time for this to happen, but you may know that over the weekend, we had a tractor-trailer strike, the railroad crossing caused significant damage.
Yes.
And through an LPR unit, we were able to track down the operator and the vehicle as far away as Ohio, or no, Iowa, excuse me, Iowa.
Well, not.
And had a conversation with him, and from what I understand, his company will be making amends for the damage caused by his tractor-trailer. So, that was completely done by an LPR system that was in operation at the time.
Fantastic. Thank you.
And I can also say, if I can add one other reason one, was PFC Hoppa was, she's one of the assigned operators of one of the two units. She got an alert, I think she was working up on O'Brett, alert for suspended registration, stopped the vehicle after confirming the registration was suspended, and it turned into a DUI arrest of the operator. So, very valuable tool for us.
Excellent. Thank you. I appreciate that very much. Anyone else have questions for Chief or staff?
Yeah, I have one quick question. I don't think I could find it in any of the documentation. What is the expected life of the device? On average? I don't, you know, I don't mean that you'll know exactly. I'm just trying to figure out, we've got a three-year update. Is this about, you know, how long it'll last, because it's outside? Or is this, we're gonna, you know, is this something that'll last for 20 years?
It would be probably merely conjecture on my part to say five to seven years, but I could be wrong. I mean, the technology, as you know, changes quite frequently.
Is it mounted inside or outside?
Outside.
Outside.
It is weatherproof mounting on the exterior of the vehicle, so.
The good news is, as long as there's firmware updates available, we're gonna be getting them, right? And so, isn't, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, you would know more than I would, Councilman Dyer, but with, with, when a manufacturer decides they want to make something obsolete because they have an improved, more expensive model, they stop sending firmware updates. Is that accurate?
That's one of the reasons I was curious.
Yeah.
Sometimes, something small like this, we use a custom board, and you say, "Well, we can't, we can't buy any of those." Well, yeah.
Right.
But, you know, on average, is what I was looking for. I looked through the doc thinking, maybe they say typical life expectancy is. But, you know, doesn't matter, I'm all about, I'm ready to vote in favor, but I was just curious.
I'll do some research and get back to you with a definitive answer from, from an expert.
I appreciate it, mainly so we can help you here.
I'd be interested to know, now that you mention that, if in the fine print of the document, that I admittedly did not read word for word with respect to the warranty, is, in those three years, should something become obsolete, do they replace that, that unit for that purpose?
That's one of my questions.
Yeah.
You can't buy Chip 7.4 of any anymore, they don't pick them.
Right. Or is what's left on our warranty advanced towards some sort of a replacement? Who knows? So, those are two questions that I think we've just come up with, Chief.
I can address that.
Thank you. Okay. Great.
I have two questions. The annual total is $10,320, so that...
No, that's for three years.
Three years. For all three years.
Both years.
Okay. So, Ms. Burbage here, because it says annual total. So, I just want to confirm, that's a total of three years?
Right. And $10,000 will get us a three-year warranty.
Okay.
Times two units.
Correct.
Yep.
Okay. And then, it says that warranty, the hardware is available for purchase within four years, but we already own it, correct? Because it was a grant? Or was the installation a grant?
We don't technically own them, because it was provided to us through the Carroll County Sheriff's Office through a grant that they obtained. They loaned or gave them to us to use.
Okay. But the sheriff's department owns them. It's not like the company owns them.
Right.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
The people own them.
The people, yes.
Councilmember Schofield, was it, I didn't want to go too deep, but he guided for us, five to seven years' expected life.
Nice job, Chief.
All right, all right.
Right on it.
Pure conjecture.
Good call.
Yeah. Fantastic. Well, my only comment then is not a question. My only remaining comment would be that if there could be some sort of a, this is probably not a frequent occurrence, where something like this could have been anticipated but was not in time for the budgeting process. So, if there could be some sort of an audit for, like, with respect to warranties, and we've got a lot of equipment over there with SPD, and I'm sure much of it has warranties that have the option to be extended, and/or, because everything's got life cycles, right? And we have schedules for those things, but maybe just do an audit of all equipment and warranties deadlines, and what the opportunities are for extension, and whether or not they would be a valuable extension. And then, we'll be ready for that in the next budget process. Thank you.
So, I have a question. If we don't do this, can we still use the units? And what's the advantage or disadvantage besides coverage or whatever? Something goes wrong, but what's the...
Replacing.
Yeah, what happens if we don't?
Yeah, I mean, that is the downside. Without the warranty, we'd be on the hook to replace the units at the full replacement cost.
If something went wrong?
If something were to go wrong, or if, you know, there's certain updates or software updates to the, to the equipment, some of the software.
You don't have access to them without the extended warranty?
Oh, we wouldn't?
No?
We'd have to pay for them separate if they offer...
Pay for the updates separate if they, so we don't know that we'll necessarily have software updates every year, or that there'll be parts. So, it's kind of an insurance policy of what is, as opposed to, we know we'll be using it for tech support or anything.
You give software and hardware support like this, and we're not psychic. If we knew it was gonna fail in eight years, we would say, "No."
Yeah, we don't need you.
But it could be six months, it could be six years.
And the cost of that one repair that Chief mentioned is gonna pay for a good portion of that, right?
Three, for three years for two units, so that's nice.
No, I mean, the one repair that we caught.
Yes, 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 yeah.
Oh, we've already had a repair?
Well, no, there's a, the one repair that was caught over the weekend where...
Oh, I'm sorry. Right, right. Yeah, the train.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which, great work, by the way, and very quick work, and appreciate.
It's all Sergeant Lacy, once again. He had it solved before lunchtime today.
Wow. We gotta give him something else to do. He's getting done too fast.
He's getting another award, I'll tell you that.
Oh, really? Okay. All right, great. Well, when it's your report time, I'd love to hear that. Thank you. So, it looks like we're ready to move on and make a motion. And I'll remind you all what staff's recommendation is, that we move to approve the three-year warranty extension on the two-vehicle-mounted license plate recognition camera systems with Leonardo U.S. Cyber and Security Solutions LLC in the amount not to exceed $10,320.
So moved.
Okay, I'm gonna give that to Councilman Dyer, and then we'll give the second to Councilman Schofield. Thank you. Any need for further debate or conversation? All right. At this time, I'll call for a vote on the motion, which is to approve the three-year warranty extension on the two-vehicle-mounted LPR systems, not in an amount not to exceed $10,320. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Unanimously, we agree to accept that motion and to therefore extend the warranty on both of those LPRs. That brings us to our announcements and reports. I'll begin. The next meeting is Monday, August 11th, 2025, and that puts me, yeah, that would be my grandmother's 115th birthday. We have volunteer opportunities available as a crossing guard and on the police auxiliary. If interested in this or any opportunity for volunteering with the town, please email town@sykesville.net for more info. That brings us to staff updates, and we'll begin with Town Manager Joe.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sure.
Just a couple of things today. Real quick, just wanted to say thank you to the police department and the auxiliary unit for their quick work on Friday. Again, it was within moments of the accident happening there on the railroad tracks there, closed the road, get in contact with the Maryland Department of Transportation and CSX, make sure that, you know, the public was well-protected, because there was obviously the block party going on at the same time, made sure that traffic was being diverted in a nice, safe way, and then, again, thank you to Maryland Department of Transportation for coming in, getting the repair done rather quickly, so that the road could be opened back up, and again, everybody safely. So, again, quick work on Friday, and very well-deserved. Kudos to the police and the auxiliary unit.
About that, do we know where the truck came from?
We know where it was traveling down Main Street. Other than that, I don't know where it came from outside of town.
If I, Chief, I may, he had just gotten off Route 70. He was looking for a place to rest and eat, and he ended up here in town, and the rest is history.
And he was coming from Howard County, across the bridge, or leaving us when that happened?
Right.
Was leaving us when that happened. So, so, he must have stopped in Eldersburg, because he didn't stop on Main Street that we know of, to get his rest and food.
No, he was looking for a place, and hard to find a place for him to stop with that size truck, and he just ended up in town, and...
Reason 6,722, why I want to limit truck traffic on Stott Hill Road, all of Maryland 851 and Stott Hill Road, and the cut-through that everybody's doing, to shorten their distance and time on 70 from 97 to 32. Thank you.
I had one other question in reference to the incident. It appeared as though that the train came through, and maybe the CSX folks, maybe the MDOT folks weren't aware that the train was going to come through at that time, and I'm just wondering about the communication. I'm not sure if it's our role or not to help with that communication, but is there anything that could happen to ensure that there's some coordinated type of issue for emergency sort of events like that?
So, there is an emergency line that CSX has that we did communicate with. We also communicated with an employee that was on-site. And again, it's how that then gets communicated after we then pass it off to them is not really in our control. We do what we can to make sure that everybody knows what's going on.
Joe, just, I was on Main Street before the train came through, and CSX was aware, they'd actually held the train up. The train did not come through until the temporary repair was made. So, it's just, that's how quickly the repair happened.
I see.
But I think, what was, three hours that they were holding the train up until the, so, yes.
So, the comms were done?
Everything was done perfectly.
Perfect.
It was done perfectly. There was no...
I didn't realize that, so thank you very much.
Absolutely.
I spoke with the CSX employee. He was on his way home from wherever he was working that day. The CSX knew that this was his area of residence, and they said, "Hey, while you're there, this is what the situation is."
Interesting.
It's fantastic.
Wow. Well, that's a good, that's a good feeling. Thank you.
The other thing, I know we actually just had a pretty significant rainstorm that just came through, but I was going to mention Public Works Department last week and the amount of cleanup effort that they undertook and, and the amount of cleanup effort that they undertook, uh, after the storms came through, it was Wednesday evening, um, you know, we had several drains around town that, uh, don't typically clog, that, uh, that had during that particular event, um, and then Public Works Department was out within an hour, the rain stopping and making sure that things were at least operational, and then obviously the next few days, uh, was nothing but cleanup. So, again, appreciate all the hard work from the Public Works Department. And we continue to monitor, um, you know, the storm drains, you know, we do have a couple problem areas in town, but we do want to make sure that, uh, they remain open, particularly when we have the heavy storms come through.
Maybe one, one thing, I did get a call from a concerned resident about whether or not it's safe to drive through three inches of running water, and no is the answer. You shouldn't drive through a flooded area. Just want to put that out, uh, for anyone who might be asking those sort of questions. I know that might sound obvious to some, but to some it's not. Um, and if, especially if you're in a part of town that doesn't get routinely flooded, then this is, you know, this is just good information to share with folks, not, not to do that, because your car can get swept away even with that amount of water, because the water is actually a lot more forceful than people know.
And it's always better to wait, because, you know, again, despite, um, you know, certain clogged drains or whatever around town, once the rain does stop, you know, the system does work, uh, so the water will drain, it will go away.
Right, take a beat and then, and be safe.
Wait ten minutes, and, and you'll have a much better chance of crossing the road.
Even with a four-wheel drive, even with a heavy vehicle, it just doesn't matter, you shouldn't.
Well, you never know how deep that water is.
That's right. It could be a sinkhole under it, you don't see it.
Right.
Right.
So, Joe, I have a question. Um, I know we retrieved a couple, wayward recycled cans, but I know that there are some trash cans still not returned, also to residents, I don't know if those have been located, or if we need a call-out to.
If anybody's, if the public's watching and you're missing a can, you can call us and we'll, we'll replace it for you. Uh, as far as where they might have gone, ten minutes, yes, I'm sure.
Or if people see, I mean, it's a.
Yeah, if they're, if you see one in the woods somewhere, we were happy to come grab it, uh, and even if we don't return it to its rightful owner, we'll make sure that wherever that came from, that they do have a, a can.
And so I had also been asked questions, because we did end up with a whole bunch of recycled cans in our driveway, and, um, is, they all have serial numbers, we have a record, so if you find a can anywhere, you most likely can identify which house it came from and return it, correct?
Well, you know, full disclosure, typically when we pull the can, we have plenty of replacement cans already, so if somebody's missing one, we, we will make sure they get it back, one, one fashion or another, it might not be the original can.
No, but.
And I'm just saying, we still can identify, if someone does find a can, we can identify which house it goes to, because we keep the serial number list, right?
Well, we have the original list, and whether or not.
We're not updating it per se.
Replacement cans have been.
Okay, thank you.
That's what I'm saying, it's, if you've lost a can, call us, we'll make sure you get a can.
Perfect, thank you.
But it does raise, uh, the, uh, flag, that nobody knew that this was going to be such a huge storm, correct? Um, if, if it, if it, within safe, safe parameters, it would really make sense to, if you've got, uh, uh, because it was a recycling, it was the night before recycling.
Correction, there was a lot out.
And.
Always is.
And, and, and that, that's what clogged the, the drains, was all the recycling debris, in addition to, you know, natural debris. So, all I'm saying is, is it would make sense if we are having a huge windstorm kick-up or a storm, to bring your, and set it back against your house, or get it in your garage, so that we don't have the debris everywhere, but obviously, just be aware, that's all I'm saying, be aware. Go ahead there, Joe.
Uh, the last thing I have, you know, it's a little bit of old news, but, uh, it's the Streetscape project on the South End, uh, Baldwin Drive is open, um, so again, that's a, it's nice for traffic. We have since, uh, since opening that, we've now closed Oklahoma and started the sidewalk work along Oklahoma, as a matter of fact, today. Uh, curbs should be poured starting tomorrow with sidewalks, uh, Wednesday or Thursday. Uh, so again, we at least hope that the, um, sidewalks there right along Main Street are back open for the weekend.
So are you saying that things really haven't been, um, like, that are, that the traffic flow hasn't really been that stressed with Oklahoma South being closed to traffic?
No different than when we had Baldwin closed, put it that way.
Okay. So actually, that's the question I have, because Baldwin's a little more friendly to in and out, right? And it's, it's, it's a little more intentional of a traffic throughway, um, than, than Oklahoma is, and so, um, it's kind of a trial run, as far as I'm concerned, to, to know what it would be like for that area to either be one-way and/or pedestrian-only, uh, that, that little end of, of Oklahoma.
I'm with you, and I, I guess I would also, on the sidewalk questions, um, because that's not always safe sidewalks. Are we wide, I, I was actually asked as walking, as I was walking around the, the market, are they going to be wider? Are we getting them closer to street level? Um, because some of those are really, because of historic size, they're not passable or safe.
The sidewalks will be slightly wider. Now, will they be five feet in all sections along the, along Oklahoma? No, they won't, just because there's simply not enough room there. Uh, but they will be slightly wider.
Are they, is the street raising to come closer, because some of them not only are very narrow, more so on the, um.
There will still be a curve there.
Okay.
There's conversation that you, that they were going to think about having the sidewalk meet the same, but that was not.
It wasn't, and again, it was more of a safety concern, because when, if the road were to be opened, then you would basically have a pedestrian and vehicle environment that would be separated at all.
So I, I saw in one of the updates that there is a plan for Baldwin to relook at the sidewalk as it meets Main Street, uh, because it feels like a bit of a speed hump.
So we'll call that Phase Three, when, when we actually do the, what's called the intersection improvements on Main Street at Baldwin.
Yeah.
That will come down and, and be a lot smoother than what it is today.
And what would be the process if we really felt inclined to possibly not reopen Oklahoma? What would that process look like?
Just tell us that you don't want to open it back.
Is there a, is there a, like a public hearing process we have to go through, or is there?
That you have to go through? No.
I would recommend.
I would certainly recommend that.
Yeah.
I just, I, so I've done, I, I take that little three-cut, because it goes right up to my house, probably a lot of people do, and going, you know, taking the turn and going up over that speed hump feels like I drove over a glacier a little bit, um, in order to go over. So if we could figure that out sooner rather than later, um, I think that would make, make that whole process a bit more pleasing, and that whole area safer. Because that turn-in is nasty, and I, I have no idea how I have not hit a car in the long time I've now lived here.
Turning onto Oklahoma.
Turning onto Oklahoma from Maine, taking the left.
Sure luck.
Yeah, probably, okay.
There's been a couple incidents where cars have hit that corner of the building.
Right.
Trucks, I thought.
Trucks.
Trucks.
Well, and have we gotten anything from any of our, uh, businesses in town about any complications, because we have it closed right now? Are they working on workarounds, like?
Yeah, no complications, I, I will admit, if a sidewalk in front of, um, Feet First has, has been torn up, so I imagine if there's going to be a complication, it's going to be that one.
Yeah.
But again, we haven't had, um, we haven't had sidewalks directly in front of retail businesses that have been torn up yet, this is the first time.
Well, my question is, is with Oklahoma closed, has any, have there been any complaints?
Like with deliveries being more difficult, stuff like that?
From any of the businesses in town?
Not yet, no.
Okay. And is that maybe because they think it's a short-lived thing and they're just dealing with it, or?
It could be, I mean, again, I think once it's done, and we have the ability to close it off, let's just say easier, because again, we will have like, uh, the, the baller replacements, um, now again, they're removable, so it's not like it has to be closed. Um, but I think it's a conversation we can have once the construction is completed, so that, you know, we can really evaluate whether or not, what kind of impact it's going to have.
I, I think the best thing for us to do is have staff put together a survey for the business owners after all of this construction is done, and what the experiences were with respect to, okay, well, if we're considering this, then what would be the impact?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, because I'll tell you, it creates a vibrancy downtown that is, it's just wonderful to see, and it does create an inconvenience for me, um, and probably others that like to take that turn to go up that part of town, but seeing the vibrancy, and maybe I'm, maybe I'm in the minority here, but, like, I would rather have that and take a little longer route to get home than see that vibrancy go away.
Well, again, this is the whole reason that we're making all these improvements, is to improve the pedestrian experience in downtowns, if that means closing a, a section of roadway, and so be it.
Yeah.
Uh, but keep in mind, you know, again, when I referred to Phase Three, like, there will be intersection improvements, both at Baldwin and Main Street, and Sandusky and Main Street, um, that will be coming as well. So again, that's part of the, uh, the two and a half million dollar project that the town approved includes those improvements as well. So again, we're, we're starting Phase Two now, those will be Phase Three improvements that are probably happening early next year, um, so again, we have some time for the, all the construction is completed.
And then maybe I'd just say out to the public that if you have concerns about anything that we're talking about right now, or if you're in favor of it, we'd love for you to come and talk to us at a future council meeting, we have one happening on August eleventh.
Yes, Grandma Ali's birthday.
So, Joe, just a last on this space, um, the accessibility, like the Feet First, obviously, I don't, that side, is that going to be wider?
Slightly.
Slightly, okay. And where we've taken up in the beginning, is that the only sidewalk improvement we're doing, or will it be the entire stretch?
No, it'll be the whole stretch. They wanted to, they really wanted to focus on the areas closest to Main Street and not tear everything out all at the same time.
Okay.
Just so they could get that area done and reopen, so that, again, like I said, that's the only direct retail store that was going to be affected, at least in this round of construction. So they wanted to tear that out and get it done, and focus just on that, and make sure it's back up in operation before they started moving further back up.
Okay, because I'll, I'll mention it more in council updates, but, um, was involved, uh, last week, two weekends ago, in an accessibility issue, um, for someone with a walker, specifically in that span, and so, you know, wheelchairs, walkers, crutches, like, that space, if it's not pedestrian where they could come onto the street, those sidewalks are just not really passable, um, and, you know, getting down to either the French Twist or, um, the fountain area to the, you know, it's just also a cut-through for walking, um, as opposed to making someone with a wheelchair or a walker kind of take a much longer route, if we don't make it pedestrian, especially during events.
Can I just bring a comment with the construction? Not only is it affecting Feet First, but there are two doors that lead up to residents' apartments, so it's taken that into consideration as well.
Oh, yeah, and again, it's like, you know, we've, we've made it clear to the, to the residents there, too, that, you know, regardless of the construction that's going on, you need to have access in and out of your apartment. So again, just because, you know, they're pouring concrete that day, doesn't mean you're trapping your apartment until the concrete dries. Um, you know, again, the contractors know that, they, they know they have to let people through, um, so again, we're trying to accommodate as best we can while the, while the construction's happening.
Think then for us, it's not optimal, but if they have to.
I'm sure you're going to have a merchants meeting before Phase Three.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I'm sure someone.
Wear that little GPS tracker, just.
Or a dog tag, so we can.
Funny, very funny, I like that one, that was a good one.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Joe. Um, so this is time for our treasures report, Jen, please, thank you.
I'm here to present June's twenty twenty-five treasures report. As for the revenue, we received two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars in income tax revenue, and fifty-four thousand in highway user revenue. Um, as for the expenses, as Joe's mentioned, it's the biggest expense was the Streetscape project that's being funded by the ARCA funding that we have, and, and employee salaries. And then if you look at the income statement and you compare the actuals versus the budget, you're going to notice that the income tax revenue and the highway user revenue is a little short, and that's because we are on, you know, the state's timing, where they send us, like last year, the rest of the money in July and in August, so, and that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any questions for treasure?
No.
Good deal, thank you, Jen, appreciate you. Unless you can make the stake it on our level, I don't know what else to say. Uh, in reference to our public safety report, Chief, please.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Uh, we're going to cover the public safety report from June second through July sixth, so a little over a month. As you can see, we had over a thousand incidents or events during this time period. Uh, some of the things I wanted to point out were, um, only one fireworks complaint.
Wow.
Thirteen house checks, so we're, we're doing a lot of house checks with the vacation season, uh, five hundred and fifty-six patrol checks, so quite a few, and eighty-five traffic enforcement initiatives, so, uh, the officers are staying busy. Uh, during this period, we also had twenty-one incident reports, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you have regarding.
I'm curious if the police officer's on duty on the night of the Fourth of July, because I was actually in Baltimore watching a, like, legal, um, fireworks show. Um, I'm curious if it really was just less people complaining, or if the police officers noticed less, uh, vibrancy.
Not sure.
Okay.
We heard booms in our neighborhood, we just kept watching the.
Yeah.
Fireworks down in DC and didn't say anything.
Okay.
Seems like every year we have quite a few complaints, and this year was very, very low, so.
Okay.
I hope that's a good sign.
Yeah, right, okay, thank you.
It happened on a Friday, so maybe a lot of people were on vacation.
Yeah.
So I have a question about an issue I think we talked about maybe about a year ago, um, resident-on-resident assaults and use of police time, um, and that being an ongoing issue, and I know we had talked about a year ago about maybe developing a report to really understand the impact, um, and whether that needs to be shared with the state in terms of licensing?
Yeah, Sergeant Lacy was actually keeping track of these, actually, I think he still is, so maybe for the next meeting I can come in, prepare to, to give you a, a report of those, but, uh, we are seeing less reports than we had been several years ago.
Uh huh.
I don't know if that's the change in the, the management up there, or, um.
That would be nice if that's what it is.
That would, yeah.
But we have met with them many times throughout the years, through varying changes in the, in the manage, management there, and the, the current management seems to be doing a good job with, with regarding that.
I'm glad to hear that.
The numbers are slightly down, but it's still, as you can see, I think on this report, there was two.
At least, yeah.
It's still an issue that, that we have to address quite often.
Are the fire police also called during those situations? The, the fire trucks have been in and out of.
Anytime it's, it's any type of injury-related, they're, they're called, yeah, so if it's a patient-on-patient assault, they're, they're called, yeah.
The trucks are, the fire trucks are, too.
Well, not the fire trucks per se, but, uh, rescue personnel, and ambulance, you know, if there's any suspected injuries.
I, I would casually encourage, um, you, if you could, Chief, to reach out to, um, Fire Police Chief, and remind him to remind his drivers that there is an ordinance, there's to be no sirens on Second Avenue or Central Avenue, um, for obvious reasons, like, who are they telling to get out of the way, A, and B, like, it's obvious, like, you can see a fire truck coming, um, and, and so it just, it just whistles in the last six months, it whistles, it, it sounds like New York City, um, and they're, they're whistling as they're pulling into the parking. It's also First Avenue, it's not to be on.
Yeah, we're not, I mean, I don't know that we're noticing an increase in the sirens, they've usually been very respectful.
There certainly is, there was an understanding at one time that, that the sirens were to be muted, uh, as soon as they got off of either Obrecht or Spout Hill, um, and turned on to Central or Second to, to get to the nursing home.
Well, and First.
And, and First, I'm sorry.
No, 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 but we just haven't, I haven't. I'm just saying, we haven't noticed an increase that I'm aware of in the sirens.
Yeah.
So it would be interesting why they would pick.
I'm sure there's new drivers or something, and.
Reach out to Chief Rock. I'm.
Thank you.
Trying to get a hold of them for another reason.
Is that a specific ordinance or?
I, I, you know, I said, I just said that. I just said that, but I think it was more of an MOU that, that may have fallen by the wayside just with new trainees. Thank you.
Well, and I guess I'm wondering if they're called in also, maybe if we can coordinate a report to see the use of.
Fire trucks.
The fire trucks as well, cause I know like planning commission's talking about an assisted living unit. So be curious, kind of the tax that we already have on responders both to, you know, already to, you know, Second Avenue.
Yeah, it's very, it's a unique situation. That will be less unique and we have another ALF.
Well, I'm just, I'm curious the coordinated, yeah, impact.
Thank you. Any questions for Chief before I let him continue? Thanks, Chief.
Just real quickly, I did wanna point out a fabulous job by PFC Hoppa. She continues to amaze me and her colleagues with her hard work and dedication to duty. This one particular case, it was triple zero eighty-one. She's out on patrol. It's a little after midnight. She does a patrol check of the middle school. As she's there, a car pulls in with occupied by two people. She proceeds to, to stop the car because there's no trespassing, of course, you know, especially that time of night. One person runs, but the operator is detained, found to be under the influence. Search of the vehicle revealed a plethora of illegal substances, to include mushrooms. You don't see too much anymore, but phenomenal police work, proactive on her part, just being out there, being visible and looking for suspicious conditions and taking the initiative to stop. Great work by Morgan.
Thank you. Yeah, that's, thank you for sharing that.
And lastly, I did mention earlier, Sergeant Lacy has been recognized once again. We submitted a nomination to now the Maryland Chiefs of Police Association. Basically the same nomination that we had submitted to the Maryland Municipal League Police Executive Association. And he was once again selected. They had various categories, depending on the size of the department. So we're in the category of one to twenty-five officers. And the, the actual name of the award is distinguished service award. So he will be recognized by the Maryland Chiefs of Police Association in September for yet another award. So his, his hard work and all his efforts are certainly being recognized.
Very good.
He hates that recognition, by the way.
He does.
Yeah, very lurid, the MML conference.
Watching him squirm.
He hates it. Yeah.
Anything else for me?
No, not for me.
I have one thing, and I can't remember if I said this before or not, but one thing that I've noticed about you, Chief, is that you're constantly putting the people in for awards and recognizing them. And when you work in a place where there's more of a toxicity around, you come to really appreciate when you see something that is done in a much different way. And I just wanna say thank you out loud in front of everybody, that you don't have to put in all those awards, right? It takes work, right? It takes a little bit effort to put it all together and put the package together. And yet you, you make the effort. I imagine the tenant also helps in terms of putting that together. And just wanna say thank you for that because that creates the type of environment where people wanna be here. And of course, we wanna have a full police force to be able to, you know, go around the neighborhoods and make sure the community is as safe as possible. So thank you.
Appreciate you saying so. It's the least a leader can do is recognize his people.
That's right.
Makes those stripes a little shinier.
True.
Yeah, no, I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Good deal. Thanks, Jeremiah. Uh, thank you, Councilman Schofield. So we can move on now to council slash commission updates. If there's anything from my far left, Mr. Dye.
Yeah, a couple of minor things.
Please.
We received two notices from Comcast. Too many people who were involved. They're gonna be dropping certain channels like HBO Family and Movie Max. I've never used them, so I don't know, but I wanted people to be aware. And more interesting to me was, it's a small amount of money, but Comcast wants us to know that some of the discounts they provide will only be available to existing customers and new ones and the two dollar discount for paying with a credit card is going away. And I just kinda feel like they're nibbling at the edge, but.
So wait, so let me understand or summarize. They're reducing services, but they're increasing cost?
Yeah.
Oh wow, interesting. Okay, thank you. I'll have to remember that approach. It's new to me. Or Comcast, I mean. Anything, Councilman Schofield, for the planning commission?
I, I do have an update. We had a planning commission last Monday. And one of the topics that was discussed was the updated concept plan that the Warfield Development Group put together. The notable bottom line is that the planning commission denied the concept plan. We, we all voted unanimously in reference to denying that particular plan. I did wanna provide some detail in reference to the PEC plan or the Planned Employment Center Zone and what the requirements are for four different types of use space. So right now, in the concept plan, what we're really focused on is land use and making sure that the appropriate percentage of land use is used appropriately as we navigate forward. And if an applicant were to stay within the, you know, within these requirements, then very likely we would have moved forward and approved the plan. At least, you know, there's a good chance of that. There's some other interesting things, a part of that concept plan, which I'll also just briefly talk about in a minute. So one of the uses is office research, institutional, hotel, or light industrial. And as part of the PEC, there's a requirement that twenty to fifty-five percent or nine point four to twenty-six acres of the property, the, the property is, I believe, ninety point five seven acres. And the provided, what was provided was nine point five acres or twenty percent. So they, they met that particular objective. The next one.
With existing usage.
That, that's right.
Correct. Yes, just for the public certification.
You'll remember in the previous plan, they were using right of ways to build in some of the space. And we asked that they go back and sort of take another look at that, and they did. So we appreciated that. So then the next use is retail or service space. And there's a requirement of ten to twenty percent of the land or four point seven to nine point four acres. And what they came in at was two point three five acres or five percent. So they did not land within the zoning requirement for that. And this is important because if they want to change those percentages, they need to put in a text amendment. And Joe, if I get any of this wrong, please correct me. They need to put in a text amendment, and that text amendment would need to come back before this body. And this body would need to make a decision in reference to that, if that's something we would support or not support based on whatever the parameters are that they're making as their case. The next one was residential, and there's a requirement of using ten to thirty-five percent of the property. And that's four point seven to sixteen point five acres. And they came in at twenty-five point seven acres or fifty-four percent. So they were well over the acreage by almost ten acres in the way that we calculated it, that the town calculated it. And then the open space needs to be at least twenty-five percent or at least eleven point eight acres. And they had nine point six five acres. So there were three parts of the plan that we did not agree in terms of the land use. And if you go and look at the playback on the meeting, there was an engaging conversation, mostly from the chair, chairman, having a conversation with a developer. I stayed mostly quiet during the conversation. And, and it was all about what the planning commission can do and can't do in reference to this process. We're in the planning commission space. They're open to some, you know, wiggle room. And there's quite a bit of wiggle room within the percentages that we're talking about here. The ranges are quite healthy, well thought out some years ago, but some of these projects take years to actually see all the way to completion. So that's, that's one part of the conversation. Still on the concept plan, there is a mention of House Bill 538, which the planning commission had a special session that was focused about that particular bill and the Q and A or FAQs that go with that bill, so that planning commission members understood what the legislation was, what makes up a qualified applicant and what does not. And I wanna point out that in that question, I did ask the question, and you can see it in playback in public. Does this, do we have in this town any qualified applicants as of right now? And the answer from the town at that time, and Joe, feel free to expound on it if you feel like you want to, you don't need to, was that no, we don't have any qualified applicants. This is important because one of the qualifications of House Bill 538 is that when you start the process, you would have two meetings. And that's as many meetings as you get, and you have to have two open meetings. And those open meetings, it's hard to really understand when it starts and when it stops in terms of what those conversations look like. And, you know, if you don't have a qualified applicant, then you don't have a qualified applicant. So no meeting happens until you do, right? And so there is a sort of a conversation going on in reference to that. And what's, what's interesting is in the FAQs, the Warfield project does get called out in the conversation. So I just wanna put that out and just be completely transparent because you can read it. So with, with all of that, in the notes of the concept plan, and a lot of times when people look at a concept plan, they look at the picture, but they don't read the notes. And it's really important that you look at the picture and you read the notes. It's important you do both. There is a request to build out up to a certain number of houses. And that number of residential units is three hundred and ninety-eight more that would be potentially built out. There is a, I think, a question in reference to some of the workforce housing that would be able to be built within that space, but we're not at that point of the overall project. That also is an issue for me from a planning commission perspective, if we don't have a qualified project. And I'm just wanting to put that out openly, that it's a question, that's an issue for me. We've not yet addressed it at the planning commission. But if another plan comes back, and very likely, part of the discussion was that we're more than happy to see any more concept plans come through. We, we are, we want to engage in that conversation. We wanna be, we wanna have positive outcomes to the extent that they're possible. But we do have some questions, and there are some limitations that the planning commission has. And I bring that to this body because this body needs to understand that some of this might come back to us. We can ask the planning commission for recommendations around whatever we want. But I, I want you all to be situationally aware because, you know, I'm probably doing some of this for you. Councilwoman Reese, just to make sure that you're fully up to speed. A lot of people here have been doing this even longer than me. But I just wanna make sure that folks are aware that this is active. And Joe, I might have booked something up there. If I did, feel free to correct me, but.
No, no, again, that was a, that was a good summary. And again, I think it should be stated, just to be clear, that we're not saying that Warfield can't be a qualified project. It's just that what's being submitted at this point isn't necessarily a qualified project.
Thank you, Joe.
Councilman Schofield, thanks for your work on this and taking the bullets at the meetings. I appreciate it.
Yep.
And I have a question. As they continue to update these concept plans, given all of the construction of business space being added to twenty-six, obviously there's a need for more commercial space in town. And so I'm wondering if their plans have changed at all from what they presented to us, which was a hundred percent residential, given the changes post-COVID with what we're seeing in our, in the rest of the community or in the zip code.
So, I mean, right now, part of the concept plan moving forward is the build out of an assisted living facility, which is arguably residential, right? It's also a business. And so we need to keep that in mind. But a lot of the other space that's being thought of in the discussions is around residential properties.
So that hasn't shifted then from the?
Not yet. And, and, you know, if we were to build out the number of homes that they're talking about that's shown in the note, which is, I can't remember the exact number. I haven't, but it's five hundred plus, which includes the hundred forty-five that are already built out. It gets us to, it gets us to three hundred ninety-eight more homes. It would take up a good portion of the property.
Vacant property.
The vacant, that's right, the vacant.
And that number is inclusive of new residential built where the vacant, where they are, where there's nothing, where the.
That's right.
Right.
There and.
Also.
Part of parcel D in the quad. That's right. It looks at both of those.
But the workforce housing isn't in the open space. The workforce housing is just in parcel D from what they continue to present?
Yeah.
It's not, it's not identified?
It's not defined.
Right. And, and they are thinking about possible, some business to be done in, like they mentioned in the meeting, and you could hear it in playback, that there are some ideas of possibly having retail or other business within the quad on parcel D. And so those are things that they're contemplating. And we're very, you know, we'd be very interested in hearing more about those sort of things as part of trying to actually build out a PEC type of zone plan.
Yeah, I just would, given the feedback we've been having from residents over the past couple of years, we'd just love to see more of an engagement with the residents and what people have been asking for and an adjustment in, you know, what we're seeing versus just continued residential. So I'm hoping, as they continue to come through with you, that we start to see an adjustment to.
So more IHOP engagements?
No, more planning commission.
Oh, I thought you meant that, that, that they should be listening to the residents, not the planning commission, but the developers.
I'd like the developers to be listening to the residents and adjusting their concept plans that we're, so that we're seeing.
So more practice.
Integration, integration of that discussion.
One other thing I think is important, one of the planning commissioners asked for any different types of plans that are out there about realty market in the area. And the plans that were provided were plans that they had previously provided. So, you know, not updates. I don't, you know, I don't think that that's unreasonable, that they haven't updated them because these processes do take a while. But to your point earlier, things are changing and evolving in our and around our community.
So much.
And one other thing I'll just say, cause you sort of implied it, but didn't go there, is that there would be at a later part of the plan, an impacts review about things like schools and public services, police force, firefighting, water and so forth. That all happens as part of normal development plan. And it's things that, you know, we'll, we'll cross that bridge when we get to that point of the process.
Yeah. I would just say, obviously for me, my preference is more green space. So it concerns me that they're trying to propose even less than, you know, the bare minimum, which I don't think serves us well in the community long term.
If they were to come before us, they are going to present arguments around, around how they're calculating things. And, you know, their calculations are a little bit different than how the town would calculate things. And so I would just encourage you to watch the playbacks and not talking directly to the council just in case it does come back, cause it could come back in the next month or two. They have, they're motivated to keep moving along. And just encourage you to keep up to speed with what's happening in the planning commission.
Thank you.
Do we know roughly what percentage of green space is, for that area, is Cary Dorsey Park?
Do you know that? I don't know.
Well, yeah, and just to clarify, one of the things that was, I guess, a, a portion of this last concept plan was they actually removed Cary Dorsey Park from the overall calculation. So Cary Dorsey Park is twenty-six and, and change acres. So if you add that as part of the overall green space, which is in fact allowed as part of the PEC district, there are over forty percent of required open space. So again, that's, that's well above what's, what's required. I think it was only twenty-five percent.
Yeah.
And so then the only murkiness or icy there is.
Sorry, we're, we're kind of returning into a planning commission.
Yeah, no, I, I have a, I have a question for clarification. Is, is the project, is the concept inclusive of all that they have access to develop? Because if, are there, are, for my edification, are the percentages of plan use?
That was part of the, the disagreement with staff and, and the national staff report that went to the planning commission was, I guess, just a misunderstanding of what they were actually proposing and why they were proposing some of the things that they were, and that was one of the reasons why the plan ended up getting denied. Was because we didn't really, nobody could really follow the logic on why they were using certain plan use percentages that they were.
Okay, fair. Thank you.
I have nothing.
No, nothing?
Oh, sorry, I have updates. I thought we were.
Yeah, no, it's your turn to talk.
Okay. So my commission update is the historic district commission did approve the concept for the addition to the French Twist to add space. It will take away a couple of parking spots in the back, but really expand the kitchen space. Hopefully get rid of the line going out the front door.
This is huge.
And a place for people to, you know, more seating, so.
Absolutely huge.
Yes.
For economic development in downtown Slicethville.
Yes.
And that's fantastic news.
Yeah. And then I have a couple of comments and psych outs, actually.
Oh, let's hear those psych outs.
So the comments first are, I continue to get questions and comments about the microphones at our tables. Asking for one for Joe. And then I think that, closer to Joe maybe, I don't know. I think it.
That's as close as it's ever been.
So we've, so anyway, I've continued to get that. And then the, I think that, if I understand correctly, the table microphones are more mumbled in terms of people being, being able to understand us versus when someone's standing directly at the microphone. I think it's better, if I understood the comments. And then a request that we look at the potential of either a first aid and or cooling station at our farmer's markets. um, at our farmers markets with the weather being so hot. Um, and this comes with my psych-outs to Officer Hoppa and, um, our police auxiliary officers in supporting, um, some of our residents who have had difficulty at our most recent ones, um, accessing the farmers markets. But then also those with wheelchairs not being able to access all of it, but also with walkers, the heat for those who are older and kind of wanting to look at, could we be? And I don't know if this would fall under us or the DSC, you know, in terms of hosting that event. But if we could have a cooling station, um, it was noted also with the beautiful new location, um, that the heat of the new blacktop on the, you know, kind of radiates a little more. And so, um, people who are, the potential for overheating or accessibility kind of things, if we could start looking at those. So, um, thank you very much to Officer Hoppa and to a variety of our police auxiliary staff who have just really stepped up to help people, um, manage that, but a request. And then, um, a psych-out to Adrian and Kevin. Uh, thank you for, they hosted, um, about seventeen people from Leadership Maryland in the most recent class and had a really, so these, um, if, to remind people, I went through this group and we're, there is an attempt from Leadership Maryland to actually hit all counties. Carroll has traditionally not been, um, hit, not, they have not been bringing groups through Carroll. Um, and there's a real push to kind of include us in a lot of those. So these are leaders across, um, the state in public office, in private, and then in, um, nonprofits as well. So, um...
You said Adrian at the gatehouse?
Adrian at the gatehouse and Kevin, um, hosted about an hour-long discussion on econo, toured the town, economic development, historic, uh, work that we've been doing. Um, and was very, very well received. I think we are, um, hopefully going to be put on the list every year, um, as the Carroll County rep because it's harder to get up to Westminster.
Why else would you go anywhere else?
I, we have those arguments as well.
Thank you.
Yeah. But anyway, so I wanted to psych out to them and thank them for really representing our town and, um, representing our town to the state.
Awesome. Thank you. And as far as the cooling stations go, I think it's pretty standard that the DSC has five-gallon buckets with water with fans on them throughout, especially on hot events.
They have not been at the farmer's market. So if we could maybe get that or figure something out, um, we definitely had a resident attend that I was...
So there's a farmer's market.
Very concerned about her ability to last through the event, so...
Might want to reach out to the farmer's market coordinator.
So we were talking to them, and I know the officers were involved in some of those discussions. I just wasn't sure if it was town or town, DSC or DSC or whatever, so...
Okay. Thank you. Parks and Recreation?
All right. Well, first I want to, I guess, thank the attendees of the movie on Saturday for sticking with it. Um, we had issues with the power that was connected to the movie equipment and lost power three times throughout the movie. I'm guessing that Drew...
Yeah.
Um, so...
It's your fault, just to be clear.
Um, so you guys, I guess, looking into it before the August event, okay? Um, and, and I also want to, I want to give a psych-out to Lee from the Band Shop, who was there on Saturday for the whole event, and it was so hot out. And he helped us with the movie, um, the, um, new sound system equipment. Um, and he was just a great resource there. Um, August ninth, uh, Spark is showing the Sandlot at Cooper Park. But before that, they are premiering Skate or Hide, uh, which is a short movie directed by local resident Steve Polites and is filmed all around Sykesville. Um, Spark, including myself, got to, to preview it. It's very awesome. I highly suggest coming out. Um, it's also done in conjunction with Shrip Town. Uh, Steve will be in attendance. Drew will introduce his film and answer any questions that viewers might have. Um, so the show starts at sunset, but you can come a little bit early for fun activities provided by Impact Church.
And you said in partnership with Shrip Town, as I dropped my phone accidentally right next to the microphone?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, Spark is selling T-shirts with their logos for twenty dollars. The profit goes towards future programs and park improvements. They're pretty sweet. And Spark will be selling them at their events for anyone interested.
They are sweet. The sweatshirts are, the hoodies are really sweet.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, it's hoodie season.
Yeah.
Um, the next Spark meeting is, uh, next Thursday, July twenty-fourth. And then finally, Spark is always looking for more volunteers. So if you're interested, even if it's just for a few hours here and there, uh, just email parks@sykesville.net.
Thank you, Councilwoman Reese, and Councilman Leo Keenan.
Yeah, just a couple. Um, program updates, uh, some grants are in progress. We are actively working on grant applications with Maryland Humanities and the Carroll County Arts Council, which support our ongoing arts, culture, and equity programming. Um, a complimentary shuttle program has been launched with the support of the town. Um, it's experimental right now. Um, it'll run till the end of this month to see, to gauge, um, need and usage. Um, but we hope to be able to continue that in the future. Uh, event recaps, Juneteenth celebration was a great success. Community turnout was higher than last year, and the park ended up being a great venue for it. Uh, it really helped with the open welcoming layout. Uh, there was a little bit of issue with the splash pad being closed. Um, possibility of maybe not opening up the splash pad next year until after this event, we'll see. Um, as everybody knows now, Farmer, Farmer's Market's been adjusted to the Baldwin's area, um, with the new layout. And it's been a success as well as the original layout. Let Freedom Ring Parade was a, was exceptionally well-attended and very enthusiastic with community participation and great execution from start to finish with public works and police.
Think it was the best one yet.
Yep.
Yeah.
And finally, um, next event is Sippin' on Summer, August sixteenth, from twelve to four. Planning's in full swing. We need volunteers. Uh, please go to the event page for that, and tickets are live on the website as well.
My only, uh, debriefing I'd like to mention about the Fourth of July, or I should say the Let Freedom Ring Parade, is that my privet was too tall and I couldn't, I was in the judging booth and I couldn't see Main Street. And I think it's time to hard-cut the privet.
Did you get rid of it?
No.
Are you sure?
I did not say get rid of it.
That's, I mean, that's what I heard.
I said...
That's not what you meant?
We'll get rid of, if we get rid of the privet, we're getting rid of the whole front lawn. It's going to just like run into Main Street without the privet there. But we need to hard-cut it. It's, it's out of control. It's too tall. Thank you. Um, anything else for the good of the order, Councilman?
Yes, I wanted to pass on a, um, somebody gave us a psych-out that they didn't even know what a psych-out is.
Okay.
So I was attending a class at MML that you, you need to be on the, uh, Board of Zoning Appeals and Planning Commission. And, uh, they got to the part of the comprehensive plan, and I looked at it and I went, that looks familiar. And he went, you're from Sykesville. And the guy was gushing at our comprehensive plan. He's, he literally stopped his lecture to say, if you guys need a comprehensive plan, you need to get a copy of the Sykesville one and make it like that.
It's award-winning, actually.
Yeah, what I'm getting at is, he literally stopped his lecture to brag on our comprehensive plan. So there's a psych-out to you and your team from a guy who doesn't even know what a psych-out is.
Thank you. That's fun. Very cool. All right. Uh, with nothing else for the good of the order, I'm going to announce that we are having a closed session upon finishing our open session here, or at least recessing it. And that meeting is proposed to be closed pursuant to the general provisions of Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland. Article, I don't have a number. Three...
Section three, three, five, B.
Okay. Oh, there it is. Thank you. Thank you, uh, town attorney. And I've read this twenty-eight times, and I'm, I'm only just now realizing that it says, okay. Pursuant to the general provisions article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, section three dash three oh five B, and three specifically to consider the acquisition of real property for the public purpose and matters directly related thereto. And number eight, to consult with staff, consultants, or other individuals about pending or potential litigation. Those two items specifically referred to above are the real property, consideration of purchasing property within town limits. And the second, uh, is the pending litigation, uh, slash Warfield lawsuits. And I will call now for a five-minute recess to clear the gallery before going back to open session and then into closed. We are now in recess for five minutes. Thank you.